Overall, I mean, we've got to say that it was a pretty good meeting. I mean, and this board, this kind of commission, I mean, they did talk a little bit about sales tax, you know, possibility of feasibility in some time down the road, you know, going in with us on a sales tax referendum. I'm not really convinced of that yet. I think that that'd be hard sell for me to do anything on a sales tax referendum right now, but I can hear. You know, it was interesting, we talked a little bit about Forty-One North, which, you know, Milton Road, and we bring that up, and so that was good information we had on that. We talked about economic development, they talked about including more information about the school district. Remember when they said, hey, we need to get that publicized, those graduation rates and those, you know, the grading, the grading of our school system? And so they talked about that. Mr. Card brought up some things with vocational education, skills, and of course, that's kind of a topic that sometimes, you know, there is a need. And Thomas, you talked a little bit about, you know, college readiness versus career and technical education, and we look forward to that, and that was good information. And so overall, Madam Chair, it was a good meeting. We missed you there, but we know where you're at. So, the last thing for me is the centers, the meeting with the centers was very good, like Ms. Cal said. There, I did speak to the CEO afterward, he came up to talk to a little bit about a high school program that they have specific, and they've done it in Marion County. I know Ms. Alagretta is here today, and he said that he was willing to get in with us about starting a middle health type program in our schools, and I mentioned her name to him, Mrs. Alagretta, so he's to let me know. But that is a discussion that he would like to have, and his information, apparently, they've had that program in Marion County. Of course, there is a focus on middle health in our communities, and so I think it would be good if we at least look at that, which I don't believe.
All right. Thank you, guys. Well, I did the start it to Mr. Walker, go to business. And I think the bottom line is, and you know the bottom line of that person, we're getting some money back. We don't know how much, little bit, but whatever it is we're getting, five percent or nothing, no, five percent or something. When we know the amount, we'll let it out, won't we? All right, thank you. All right. Anything else? I'm going to adjourn the special meeting and open the workshop, and we'll begin the policy review. Ms. Dixon.
We have four policies for review today. The first one is a new policy, four point six five for virtual instruction. This one was reviewed by the Policy Performance Committee on July twenty first. It's a new policy that I request EMCS developed for our use. And Mr. Mullin is here, if you have any questions regarding, I think it codifies what we're currently doing.
That's correct. It's a policy the auditor kept asking us to have. It's something, we have been doing this, and we felt like it was covered in other policies, but they want continually wanted a specific policy just to set this.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions? I don't believe that on this.
No, only if you have any questions. I mean, if you have any changes, now's the time to address those and then write it back for publication. The next item is a new policy, seven point two, this committee discussed it in January.
My only question on this, seven point two five grant management, Mr. Dixon, is that correct?
Yes, that's what we are.
Yeah, my only question dealt with the ability of the district to utilize a grant manager outside of the district, and how that would work if there would ever be a time when we would hire someone to write a grant.
I don't think it precludes that. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I don't know if that...
It didn't, I didn't see anything here that represents...
This is coming from the federal government, you know, grant guidelines. It says we have to have this policy in place throughout this fiscal year, the secrets of support, it's coming out of the federal government, you know, grant management, all of that. If you look, all schools are going through this process, and this policy is put in place in some kind of fashion, you know, the policies are, they're processes in place, and they have to be better.
The trust is, the C N trust is, the other trust is, we consider, uh...
They manage their grants with some...
They have to include that.
Things like, I mean, they're asking probably a lot of, you know, charter schools, you know, see grant, you know. If they're going after a grant...
Linda, what do you write down? Oh, thank you.
They're the only fact of, you know, if they keep going after that grant, that they have to either, you know, they hire a grant, they buy the...
But for our policy, if the administration superintendent or your office had someone come in and say, hey, we want to write this grant for you, we need to get ten percent, that would be brought to the board.
We've had those approaches before, we never seen, we haven't seen the guy.
Sure. Right. Right, and so when I saw a grant management, that's what came to my mind.
This is coming from the federal government, they have these policies.
Okay, very good.
Do we have someone on staff who does prevent?
Yes, we do.
Any other comments on this particular policy? Next are revisions to policy seven point six five anti-fraud, and they just add sections E and F regarding unauthorized destruction of records and that sort of thing. And these are, and, excuse me, the last three sections, superintendent shall, or designate shall develop procedures to implement this policy and present the procedures to the school board for approval. And there again, this was recommended by EMCS to address requirements. Any questions? Lastly, this one is one that was put forth by our staff to, this is policy nine point one one, donations of gifts, and to add a provision so that gifts from the Citrus County Education Foundation don't have to come before the board if they're over five hundred dollars, because they're specifically set up to donate to...
I think you talked about this one time before.
Yeah, I think this is, so it doesn't have to come up every, every time.
And I'm absolutely for that, and I'm glad we're doing, I know we've been working on this one, we've come forward. I do like the idea of us being able to acknowledge the CCEF's, you know, money, so if there's a way, maybe we just regularly somehow can publicly capture that and share that out, because I think it's just good for the community to know, but it doesn't have to be in any, it doesn't have to even be on the regular agenda or something, but just as, just as we can let that information to us. They're just doing such good stuff.
Any other comments or concerns?
Hi, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Student code of conduct, code of student conduct, I've already said it.
It's the Bible.
I was reading from the Bible at this point.
Good morning, school board members. It is that time of year again for me to bring the annual code of student conduct review for the year two thousand seventeen eighteen for you.
All righty.
Knowing that we have a new school board member, if it pleases the board, I would just like to take a few minutes to explain the process of how we got to this day today. Is that all right with everybody?
That'd be great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, the review process for the code starts back as early as September, and that time, we ask principals for a designee from their school to serve on that committee. Ninety-eight percent of the time, the principal assigns the assistant principal and/or her dean to be the designee for each school. Once I receive their names, I then send those designees all the portions of the code of conduct. Their responsibility is to share the code of conduct with the enhancement councils and with all their staff members. Once they have an opportunity to do that, they provide feedback, suggestions, changes, additions, that either SAC committee members make as a recommendation, or staff make as a recommendation. Those designees then bring those proposed suggestions to that committee meeting. We had that committee meeting in December, and just so you know, the stakeholders who serve on that committee are quite numerous. We have, of course, those representatives from each one of those schools. Sometimes a counselor will follow with that school as well. We have district departments and administrators who are represented, including transportation, the E S E department, informational services, ed services, technology, et cetera. We also have your own school board member, Mr. Doug, Mr. Doug Dye, who serves on that committee. We have law enforcement there. This year, Deputy Berry served as representation from law enforcement. We have students who serve on that committee, we have parents, and our school board attorney, Mr. Bradshaw, is also present at that meeting. During that meeting, we present all the proposed recommendations to that committee that are presented at their, to their individual schools. Each one of those suggested recommendations is discussed, is talked about, and then the committee makes that decision on whether to bring it forth to you five members to see if you would add those or delete those suggested changes from the code. And so that brings us here today for this workshop and your approval of the recommendations from this committee. I would like to publicly say that I do value the integrity of this committee. They spend a lot of time looking at those changes, having very thought-provoking conversations. Students are heavily involved in those conversations, and I do respect the integrity of that committee and thank them for all that they do for this process. Thank you. You should have in front of you a couple of pages of the proposed changes that were written here this morning. What I have done is I have provided the current language in the code, which is in black, and I have added the different language in red for the proposal of these. Also, if there's a recommendation for a deletion in an item in the code, you'll see that with a strikeout line through the verbiage. So I'm going to move through these several changes that I'm bringing for your consideration today. I'll share with you what the change is being recommended, and then if you have any questions. Okay? Your first item to consider for change is on page ten in the code. It's under health information, and the suggested change, as you can see, is highlighted in red. What the recommendation is, to just make a change to be more specific, to add student medication authorization instead of just the word permission. A couple of parents have had concern about that, that it wasn't specific enough, and the group felt that that was a recommendation they surely could appreciate and bring to you for change. The next consideration for a change on the bottom of page one pertains to an item on page thirteen in the current code of conduct. We are asking the board to consider to remove that whole paragraph from the code. The reason for the recommendation for removal, it is a procedure we do not follow currently.
I answered one question.
But if you look at it, you know, it's, is it a suggestion, and then it's backed up with what you require, so it's kind of contradicts itself.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a contradiction, inappropriate.
Yeah, so it's kind of, doesn't require a parent to do it, it requires them to produce evidence of it.
Plus, with the school board and the support of the school board members, having the Renaissance Surmy Alternative School in place, we do provide counseling for those students that have a violation related to drugs, alcohol, or controlled substance. So we do provide the counseling, and prior to their return to the school, Ms. Neat guarantees that they've at least had that counseling.
I thought you were going to say she guaranteed, never mind.
That's okay.
Guarantee that child.
I'm going to keep moving forward unless I have some questions. Page two of your handout, at the top of the page, involves page twenty-one and twenty-two of the code, and it is under item T, inappropriate use of internet. As you can see in the handout in front of you, the current language is in black. The suggested red language is what the committee is asking the board to consider.
Um, Ms. Alagretta, I had a chance to, and board members had a chance to talk to Ms. Alagretta, Dr. Geddes, Superintendent Tamal, numerous technology educators and some teachers along with Mr. Mullin. There seems to be that there was an unintended consequence with this verbiage that no one seemed to pick up on, and that was that this would have a dramatic change in our current practices and expectation from the district. And Mr. Mullin maybe can clarify that if it's an issue, but by taking, by having, or by adding the word "should be" for instructional purposes only, it removes any use of any kind whatsoever of any device, whether school or otherwise, from use on the bus during breaks, in the lunchrooms, or at any point on campus. The purpose, Dr. Geddes said for his recommendation initially, was an issue we had in one of the schools regarding a student that inappropriately interfered with a test. And we were able to address that issue with the current language. And he said he never intended for that line to have the impact that it did. And so, to continue with our current practices and expectations of the district, I'm suggesting that we remove the line, "should be for instructional purposes only," and maintain the current language that would say, "any electronic device which includes but is not limited to the access of the following be done." And I think I've talked to Ms. Alagretta, Dr. Geddes, they all suggested the same. And Mr. Mullin, I don't know if you have any thoughts on this.
But the current practice, you know, we've transitioned quite a bit from not allowing students to have a cellphone at school to the, where we are today. Students will listen to their cellphones on the bus, tune into music, and listen to their cellphones on their ride home. Administrators allow them in cafeterias during lunch. So you're right, if they're only allowed to access the internet for educational purposes, that wouldn't include accessing internet or music or anything like that for them to...
And this even references it on their network, as it says, "is accessed through a cellular network on the..."
And I, in our current practice at the high schools, they do allow students a bunch of time to use their cellphones.
And I don't think that there's been any direction to ask for that to be changed or for...
It hasn't caused, it hasn't caused the problem, it's, that I'm aware of. As a matter of fact, the principals tell me it's something that, you know, now they're not chasing that, so that's a lot, they're not dealing with those discipline issues, it's actually freed up them to deal with other things.
And this does not preclude any teacher from limiting access of any type in their classroom. If a teacher does not want to have that, that's still a privilege to have or not have that used. But there's also a lot of teachers that use it for encouragement, that, you know, say they don't mind listening to their music while they're doing equations. And if we do that, I think we're taking away some of those aspects. So that would be my suggestion of the board.
Now, our internet, when they're on our internet, it is for instructional purposes only. What you're referring to is when they access their own digital plans.
Right, and I believe ours tunes it down anyway, so for example, they can't stream using our internet anyway if they're on the computer.
Well, I guess that was my point, I thought, that we were dealing with here, is the use of the school's internet access.
Now, it says here, "the school's portal," or "by access through a cellular network on the school's property," which means any, any network or cellular device on the school property.
Well, then maybe that's what we should take off, is the use of a cellular network on school property. I mean, the point of the, of the committee was that the school's internet was supposed to be used for instructional purposes only.
Correct, and it does say that elsewhere in our, in our acceptable use. The purpose of this was, for example, in an incident that we had, a student moved off of the school's network, went on to their private network and did the harm to the system. So the idea of, I believe, having the, any cellular network is to protect the district so that if they do anything that isn't school appropriate, whether they do it, and I'm looking to scratch, I say, whether they do it under any device, under any network, if they're on our property, the idea is, they're supposed to be, it's still supposed to be school appropriate. And that's what I think the purpose of making sure that there is that line in there, is if we remove that, then conceivably they could say, well, I was on my own device, on my own network.
You're right, Mr. Dye, we don't want them streaming music or doing those things on our network, but most of that, that's being done on their own digital plans with the students.
I was not confused with this, and I kind of agree with Doug, because I said, on any electronic device, and I think, I'd like to see differentiation between their personal devices and the ones that we provide.
Now, even on their personal device, we don't want them accessing something inappropriate on our campus.
Right.
But listening to music, those have really prevented all the problems that has created with kids listening to music on their way home through the bus and everything.
Right, and then, I mean, this is a good discussion to have, but, you know, since before that, students shall only use their assigned username and password to access the district internet or electronic resources. So my, the title is inappropriate use of the internet, I mean, if it's, you know, my understanding is this is to protect our internet portal from being used for things other than instructional purposes. But I know what you're saying, Mr. Kenny, you're saying that you don't want this to be as a broad policy that somebody might interpret as you can't get on your smartphone...
Or even, for example, I mean, I text my child throughout the day in school, checking up on things, they get me something, they need something, back and forth. This would be prohibited under the way it's currently written.
Well, let's do a cellular network though.
Like I'm saying, in this line, it actually says though, dear, "by access through a cellular network on school property," and then it goes on to say that it would be prohibited.
And I don't think that was the intent of the committee, or our intent was to, kids would be, because a lot of kids communicate with their parents during the day, and, you know, we don't allow them to take their phones out in class without permission, but a bunch of time, they've been given that flexibility almost.
I think that, here's the thing, is I think that there's, there's two other areas in policy that address this, this issue that I think, Mr. Dye and Ms. Counsel, you're concerned with, and that is the inappropriate use of the school network. The user agreements that the students sign, I believe it addresses it there, and then it also addresses it in our actual policy of internet usage. So, excuse me, and we know that because we were able to, without this change, discipline that student for use both on and off of our network, I'm sorry, on or off of their network, their individual private's network, in a recent situation. So we already know in policy we have that, that issue covered. So this really, in tuning it up, and again, it kind of over tuned it from what we were doing, because again, in policy, we already have that.
What if we were to say internet access through the school district's portal, using any electronic device should be for instructional purposes only, is that, that's a true statement, isn't it?
That is a true statement.
So if we were to say internet access through the school district's portal by a student using any electronic, or by, and then afterwards say, or by, because here's the thing, we still need to cover to make sure they're informed, that if they're on their network, they still can't do inappropriate school sites or anything else. But that would cover, I think, what you're saying, if you put that line and then continued afterwards, or by access through a cellular network, because now you've covered, the school portal is only for this.
Right.
Or any other network is going to cover all of those other issues within this.
Mr. Mullin?
Mr. Bradshaw, we, if we just changed that, instead of internet access by a student, and said, access to the district internet by a student, would that take care of what they're asking?
Yeah, I just wrote down internet access by a student through the school district's portal, using any electronic device should be instructional purposes only.
And then how do you still capture though, to make sure that if they're on their device, that it still has to meet the rest of, you know, our expectations?
I think you put it on the first sentence, prohibited activities.
Well, the first sentence doesn't then cover, Thomas, the use of internet, either through the school or by access through cellular network, is a privilege granted by, it's just a privilege.
I think somewhere in that first paragraph, you'd have to say, we'd still have to adhere to the student code of conduct requirements.
Right. That, that's why I think...
We can't possibly list it.
But if it was, the use of the internet, either through the school district's portal, no, the use of the internet through the school district's portal is for instructional purposes only, or either by access through the cellular network, and then you continue the rest of it, would at least cover now that the school's portal is supposed to be for instructional purposes, which I think is what Mr. Dye was saying.
Yeah, we want to, we want to maintain that.
So that, that would cover to make sure that the portal's being used for that purpose. And here's the thing, it's going to come before us again, but if we're all kind of in agreement of what we're trying to accomplish, you probably can wordsmith it, and then when it comes before us, I'm sure it'll be, rather than it's, it the exact thing.
You have a passion out there.
Yeah, I think as long as we all understand and we're on the same page about what we're doing.
Are you wanting to bring that to the board talking?
No, just, just bring it with me.
We can bring it on the February fourteenth meeting, when we bring it for the finalization of your approval.
Yeah.
Knowing that we have the understanding of what the board's direction is. You good with that?
Is that okay, board members?
Yes, there's something we always discuss about, doing homework on the bus, and this is homework on the bus, but apparently the bus doesn't buy and do not allow homework on the bus. Do you do that, can you tell the whole bus, can you do your, do you do your homework?
Yes. Yes, it's up to the bus driver.
Same as the classroom.
Same as the classroom. Same as principals have the authority, say, no one's going to use their cellular phones and everything, you know, to the school.
And I, as much as I don't necessarily concur with it, I think it's the only way to have a reasonable measure for that instructional teacher, that bus driver, to make that decision that's, that's in their environment. And I, and I feel like we kind of have to support that, even if we don't necessarily, I don't think we want to encourage it.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, you don't, you don't know the reasons or what's happening on the bus. I mean, at some point in time, maybe for safety purposes, say, look, everybody y'all are shutting down all your stuff, we're too crowded, you know, doing whatever, whatever you're doing.
Well, and they may not... Well, and they may not, you know, I know with some, I've heard that, you know, it's, it's so rad, it's raining, and they want all the books out because in fear that books could be flying around at the end of turn somewhere. I, I have to support the idea that as much as I'm, I'm still not in agreement with it, I've got to support that they have to have control over their environment.
So, then we'll move forward to the next suggested change on page 27 in your code, letter F and number six. Both of these items go hand in hand, and we're looking to change the language so that it's consistent in both those sections. We also want to include students on a 504 plan, as well as students on an IEP plan, that if they do have an infraction of the code, that both those students are entitled to a manifestation meeting, and they are to be scheduled as soon as possible, and within the 10 days after the removal of the student for the infraction. On page three, page 33, number ones, two and three, we just want to add designated after principal. A parent was concerned that she did not give a call about her student's violation for this from the principal. So, the statute does say it can be principal and/or designated, so we wanted to add that so that there wouldn't be any more concerns if the principal themselves didn't make that call. And the last item I bring to you today for suggestions is page 36. It has to do with our non-discrimination information that we are required to put in our code, as well as in other places. The recommendation from the Office of Equal Educational Opportunity, better known as OPO, has asked us to update our non-discrimination information with more current information.
Can I just also, I meant to, and I'm, I'm sorry, I had a little family issue that I was dealing with, I just want to thank you all for bringing the 504 part on page 27. It, I, I know we all, I know it's been in practice, I know it's been being done, I know it's been kind of understood, but I just appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I brought up one item to this, I'll bring it up, I just think it's just a typo, I just wanted it to be consistent, and that was on bullet one and bullet four, but there, there's a couple of words that are not the same, on marital status of disability. I think really when I read it, it should say disability combined marital status, but one of them says marital status disability, one says disability marital status, so I think it was just that.
Something we could...
And then the statements should be the same.
So, is your recommendation to have marital status before disability, or disability first and then marital?
I think there's marital status, but I don't think it was either law or what you were saying.
It doesn't, doesn't that one exist?
What's your pleasure, Mr. Dodd?
Alphabet.
Disability and disability.
I just wanted to be the same.
Okay. So, we'll go with disability and marital, we'll leave that on both bullet one and four? Leave one and change the other. Thank you. And those are the recommended, recommended changes that the committee has brought forth to you. Just the last piece of information I want to share with you, also now a part of this yearly review as stated per new legislation, is that every three years we revisit that those stakeholders are bullying and harassing policy by point 321. When I've heard that information to the board, it was agreed on that we would meet yearly to do that, and we can go above and beyond the requirement. So, this was a perfect opportunity at this time, we have all those stakeholders present. There was one recommenda, one question brought about the language, why it's so verbose and so complicated for parents, and the, after discussion, the committee was informed that that language comes straight out of statute, and we have to, as does every other district in the state of Florida, use that language. So, that was shared with the parent on the school. So, there are no other changes to that policy, knowing that it just was updated recently. That concludes my presentation for the recommendations.
Thank you, Sandra Rettner.
I appreciate it. And I thank you all for your patience. Have a great day.
You too. Okay.
If you do ask now, or you call me, thank you, and I'll come back, or do, or do whatever you say.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll probably go pretty fast today.
You will. Okay. Health insurance update.
Are you going to pin something and send it to me?
I did give you a new revised copy of the presentation, there are just a couple of revisions, and I'll note them as I go through. But I am here to give you an end of the year status of where we are at this point in time with our health insurance fund. I'd like to recognize and thank Brian Branham for being here with Crown. Brian works very closely with us throughout these processes, the open enrollment, the renewal, the RFP, whatever may come about, he works with us regularly. Also from Crown, we have Neil McDonald with us, so we appreciate the fact that he is here today as well. Kim Van Etten is the employee benefit specialist, and she'll be here momentarily, so she'll be here as well. So, if we could go ahead and proceed to our first slide. This is where I'm just showing you a three-year period of time of what our claims data has been. And then you'll, you'll see at the bottom of that slide, the totals, where they have, you know, gone up gradually throughout the years. 2016, I wanted to note, you see those red asterisks? Those months, June, months June through December, we did receive stop-loss reimbursements back. So, this was our actual claims bill prior to getting the stop-loss reimbursements back. So, that's adjusted for you on another slide, I'll show you that. So, where it says our total is 12.850, to give you an idea, in total, over that six or seven month period of time, we received back 1.644 million back to us in the form of Symetra reimbursement. And again, I'll get into that a little bit more.
So, this bottom line will change?
The bottom line gets better for 2016.
Yes.
Because of stop-loss reimbursements.
Yeah. Stop-loss reimbursements on those claims that reach a certain level to buy?
That exceed 175,000.
And how many of those did we have?
Since you mentioned that, you might be surprised to know that 40% of our claims expense goes toward 1% of our covered, our covered lives. 20 folks account for 40% of our total claims dollars. Answer that question. But we have been hit this year especially, in 14, in 15, we did not have stop-loss reimbursements. But we had had that because of some extremely high claimants that we have had this year has caused that to occur. We've gotten that reimbursement, thank goodness we have the Symetra reinsurance, we've gotten that reimbursement back. As a result, and we'll get into that a little bit down the line too, our premiums have gone up a little bit for that because our plan is a greater risk to them right now.
That, I know that's, that number is jarring, but is that maybe for insurances not terribly uncommon, because those who use insurances are, you know, I mean, those that, you use those insurances at, at the times when you have critical needs?
I don't know if, if that would be considered uncommon, I'm comparing...
Yeah.
And Kim, Kim just joined us, Kim Van Etten is our employee specialist.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Forty-two percent is a little high, to have, and traditionally with our plan speaking, we've averaged between 11 and 14 high-cost claimants a year. And defining high-cost claimant is when a, when a claimant exceeds 50% of the deductible. So, once a claim exceeds 85,000 probably, we're tracking and monitoring and making sure that the claims are being paid appropriately and so forth. So, this, this past year, like Sherry said, we had 26 that exceeded that.
50% of the reinsurance deductible.
Correct.
Not their deductible.
Correct. Oh, no.
How does that compare with maximum out-of-pocket?
Oh, no, the out-of-pocket.
I mean, not maximum out-of-pocket, the, uh, I'm trying to get a name of it, a party? Uh, yes, the, yeah, the aggregate.
Oh, no, well, in terms of the members and their, what they've, what they've paid, they've, they've already exceeded their deductible. We're not going to claim that this 80,000 dollars and up. So, we had 26 of those, Sherry's point, we had six this year that exceeded the deductible and we've been, that's where the 1.6 million in reimbursement has come from. Back to your, your question, 42% is a little high, traditionally you see 20 to 30% of the membership, and yes, it's 1 or 2% of your membership driving a large portion.
And that, and that's part of what I was thinking, but, but it is a little higher than say...
It is a little higher than, well, you have an anomaly, you have a special claimant that is rare, that is very, very costly.
And just for anyone worried too, again, HIPAA prohibits us from even knowing that kind of information, all we really have is just general numbers that reflect that.
Correct.
So, you would, you would in essence only be able to ascertain that just purely by seeing the link that, a lot of it's going towards one area, but we don't necess, we don't necessarily know, and I don't want people to be worried that we're looking in and saying,
Right.
"We know who you are," because we don't.
Right. That's right. And, and the, the important piece in what, you know, what Sherry and I, what we deal with is, how do we mitigate those claims? Because they're, they're not moving away right now, they're, they're here, so we have to do the best we can to manage that.
So, on the next slide, slide three, you'll see the monthly averages, but again, when you look at the monthly average for 2016, I remind you that's prior to the reimbursement from Symetra. So, the next slide might show a more true picture as far as after those, after the reimbursements. If you look at the next slide, you see this from time to time, I share this with you, but if you'll look at the back of the slide, the blue bars, okay, that is what the projected claims would be had we stayed fully insured. So, back in 2009, our claims were running 10.5 million. And a fair estimate nationally is a 10% average per year. So, had we stayed fully insured on that path, and it had gone up approximately 10% each year, then today we would be sitting at 15.683 in claims dollars. But as Brian mentioned, we've done things to help mitigate that. We went self-insured, we opened up the wellness center, and we've worked real hard to manage, manage these claims as best we can. So, the green lines, the green bars, that is our actual dollar amounts that we spend each year. And the green bar represents claims amount plus the running of the wellness center, the expenses of the wellness center combined. So, the back line would be claims alone, whereas the green line is our actual claims expense plus the expenses of running the wellness center. And you'll see on average, over these past few years, it's been a 3%, 3.3% increase on average each year. You'll even note that 2016 is slightly down from 2015. Okay? All right. If you look at slide five, this has been revised, and you'll see there has been a slight revision from the last page that you saw. This was due to a reverse subrogation claim that came through that needed to be added back in, an Affordable Care Act payment that needed to be registered. So, based on the financials that we have at this point in time, we are projected for our year-end to be, and where we are right now is at negative 522,678. And we don't like to be negative, we prefer to be at the break even and also be building up a reserve. So, we are working on those things, you know, we've made some difficult decisions this past year with our renewals, with our plan changes, our premium increases, things that should put us in a better position at this point in time next year. Those changes that we made didn't do anything to assist us in 2016, because those didn't become effective until January 1 of 2017. So, those things again should help us when I'm standing here a year from now presenting the information to you. But you will see that comparing 2015 year-end and 2016 projected year-end, last year at this point in time, unfortunately, we were, we were sitting at 1.342 in the red. And we had to come to you, and that's when we did have to make that transfer from the general fund, and it's also noted here, this does not reflect any transfers from the general fund. So, a question that I would think is on your mind is, well, what are we going to need to do this year? And that's on our mind as well, it does, we are obviously in a much better position than we were at this point in time last year. The information is being sent to the actuary, he's going to be looking at it, and he'll be looking at the factors, and then he'll come back to us and let him know, let us know the final as to where we're at. You know, there's a 1.6 reserve line item that we had set aside when we came to you six, eight, 10 months ago, and we knew the situation that we were facing. The board was very diligent, we did set aside the 1.6, it's a line item, reserved right now, should we need whatever that we may need. Again, that's an unknown right now, we are waiting to hear back from the actuary. We know that actuarial report is not due until March, so he's just gotten our year-end figures, and he's going to be working with that, we'll be communicating with him, with several phone conferences as we did last year, before we know the final end result, which I'm sure is, you know, in your minds on what that's going to be. But again, and we are in a better spot than we were at this point in time last year.
Can you see that, of course, the year-end, maybe not close to the figure?
That's not, the figure that we reconciled because of that was in the neighborhood of 60,000, that's not the total amount that we had paid for the year though.
What was the total that we...
The total amount that we see at fees this current year?
So, I can backseat it real fast, but, just a second.
So, the 800,000 and then the 1.6 million was to shore up the reserve, the requirements for our reserves?
Right. The 800,000 that was transferred did that for our year-end last year. The 1.6 is just sitting there now.
We budgeted.
So, we know what we need.
Because we got to wait for the actuary to tell us, which he could tell us, we may even afford that, I certainly hope he doesn't.
Correct.
Or she doesn't, the actuary. But...
It wouldn't appear that way based on, on our numbers, but he factors in lots of things.
But, but that was just to shore up the reserve, right? I mean, now we're talking, we've already lost another 522,000 dollars this year.
Yes.
Okay. Which, if you do a quick math, that's, you know, $230 maybe an employee, I don't know, extra that we lost, that we're going to have to come up with, because in reality, being self-insured, that loss is, is coming out of our reserve, correct? Is that how we're paying that, and then we're refunding the reserve?
The transfer we made out of the general fund, you remember we paid on the budget deadline, there's an assigned fund balance of 1.68?
I can't quite hear you there.
If you remember in the budget, there's an assigned fund balance number 1.62, that is a year mark for the health insurance fund.
That's right.
In case we need that dollar amount or some number, you know, up to that amount that we need to move to the health insurance fund to make it actually sound. Now, we don't know what that number is yet, like Sherry said, the actuary is starting to just get a blinder, you look at the numbers, you start plugging through the system, Crown has sent them information, so it's a, it's a, it's a multiple task that you have to put together for the current year, and then you look at your next three years out to see how you're going to be coming out in this situation, which I think we have a pretty good plan in place. There's a lot of information that was shared this year, a lot of hard decisions that were made to raise the premiums to effectively take care of all right, the deficits that were seen.
And, and I'm, and Sherry's putting together a good program, we're going to get and see some of that information. But again, now, the 522,000, we budgeted 1.6 extra. Right. Won't that come out of the 1.6?
Correct. Depending on what the actuary says.
The dollar or the...
Right. But literally, we couldn't, we, if the actuary wants 1.6, we're still going to have to cover this 500, right?
No, that 1.6 would be... No, one point six would be...
One point six would be enough, if that's what he says.
It may be less than that. Because what they do is they look at your cash balances too to see if you have enough reserves in your cash to carry you for the sixty days.
And we don't have any real idea on the actuary, I mean, where that number may come in right now.
No, it's too early. We just sent it to him. We sent some numbers to him Friday. I know Brian sent some numbers to him yesterday, so now he's trying to compile everything, plug it to his actuarial system. I mean, yeah, we would love to have that number right now today, but unfortunately, I don't usually deal with that one.
Right. And I guess my comment is that there is a chance, there's a possibility that we may need to make up even more than the one point six we budgeted.
I really hope we don't. I mean, I hope, right, it's not going to come in that way, but we're just waiting for the actuary to let us know now. But, I mean, if you look at the plan year, this year compared to last year, I think much better, much better. But we actually, I mean, Symetra now is looking at us and saying, "Hey, you guys really got us this year now." You know, so now they have, they've gone up and they've raised the fees a little bit, but they've raised the aggregate number up. So, I mean, that's to be expected. That's what they're going to do. But that's why we have it, going to take care of those high claims. You can't have a self-insurance pool without that type of insurance.
And if you were to look at where we'd be if we weren't self-insured, ooh! Am I correct too, that, and I think I asked this last year, but just to, for my own clarification, let's say Mr. Blocker's correct that we have to go after, let's say, that five twenty-two or whatever the case may be, and it does work out to like two hundred and fifty dollars a member or a claim. We can't retro... We can't next year raise premiums to compensate for what we didn't have in the previous years capturing so that we shore ourselves back up. We can only go forward of what we believe the claims are going to be and the costs for that.
Yeah, I mean, you can theoretically set your premiums any way you wish, you can self-fund it, but you basically use your projected claims and all...
But I'm saying, right, it's not that you can say, "Okay, well, we lost one point five last year, and so we're going to add that back in." I didn't think that was something we even could do.
I mean, like I said, you can make them anything you want, but realistically, you would do it. But now, the plan is in place to build that fund up, so there is dollars being added into those premiums to build the fund.
To build that, yeah. And then I know it's been, I mean, we were at one time till we had those.
Right. The fund was very healthy.
Yeah, I would say it was very healthy.
If you look back in time, it's been more of a revenue issue based on some things that happened, so.
Just under eighty thousand was the total amount for Affordable Care Act fees for 2016.
Well...
Crystal ball.
Yeah, well, you know, the transitional reinsurance fee and the equity fee was set up to be three-year programs. We did the third year. There is some indexing. However, with the new administration and how that's... You know, I would anticipate it trying to do some changes. We do have it budgeted the same amount for 2016 and our 2017. So, in case we need to, that it is continued, we at least budgeted the same amount because it has been going down. If you recall, the first year, three years ago, it was sixty-three dollars for recovered life, and it was a two hundred and forty thousand dollar year mark that we had to set aside. So, last year was a twenty-seven. So, we did budget that.
The only other thing I was going to ask with that is, and I know it's, again, asking to have a crystal ball, but because of the Affordable Care Act and because of the new administration and the appearance that it seems like individuals may become exempt from having a penalty for not having their insurance, if then, to me, it is an interesting dichotomy maybe for us. Does that mean the policy that actually costs us the most to operate, those individual ones, could, those people may drop off? And that could be, you know, could be a help to us? Or on the other hand, does that mean that we have new costs that we didn't associate with because we budgeted some of those in there and now they're not going to? So, is it just way too early to know?
Well...
But it certainly seems like it could impact us.
You know, the individual market, you know, the news and so forth has been, from the marketplace standpoint, has seen the increases have been a hundred percent, fifty percent, depending on what state you're in. And in a lot of cases, in other states, you're down to one insurer. So, the marketplace is really not, has really lived up to what it was supposed to in terms of keeping premiums down. It's been quite the opposite. As you know, what's happened is, is the marketplace has been adversely selected against. So, the young folks, the people that are healthy, "Well, I'll just pay the penalty. I won't get insurance." Those that need it are always the ones that are in it, so...
And if they're going to waive the penalty, then we're going to have more of those people doing that, which are the very people we need in the system in order to help offset the costs. And so, therein to me is an immediate concern that we end up facing.
We could, in essence, have those folks that maybe, that are not on the plan now, that are in a change, come back.
Next slide. The Symetra reinsurance, as I mentioned before, that has changed somewhat. Like I said, we got one point six million back in, from that reinsurance. So, when we went to negotiate for this 2017 year, we were a loss to them last year, and so the premiums have changed. They've gone up slightly, and they've changed the conditions of those. Brian went to bat for us, of course, and did those negotiations and did the best he could to get them as far down as they possibly could come for us. You'll see that the individual specific deductible has stayed the same, the hundred and seventy-five thousand, but the aggregating specific cooling has increased from three hundred thousand to six hundred and seventy thousand. And then in addition, the premiums have gone up slightly as well. We did budget for the increased premiums. To give you an example, if a, if an injured person's claim, if it's a hundred, we pay the first hundred and seventy-five thousand out of our plan. And then anything after that comes out of this pool of money. So, now it's going to be coming out of this six hundred and seventy thousand. Once we've exhausted that pool, then the reinsurance kicks in and pays everything that's in addition to that. So, the...
So, this is going to cost us about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, basically, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
And the premiums have gone up as well, from about forty-nine thousand a month to about fifty-eight thousand a month, so.
That's the total. You're right. However, what we were... The dilemma that we're faced with is the one special claimant issue, how to isolate that. Because you're talking one point two million dollars for just one year. So, in the stock loss world, you can, what's referred to as lasering, you can individually set that deductible higher for that particular plan member. But when we did that and worked the math, it was actually going to be more dollars. So, what we're able to do with Symetra, and it's unique to Symetra, we can divert premium dollars to a pooling, which Sherry was referring to. As an example, in 2009 and other years, there were several years where we, with, you know, the actual premium dollars or what's set aside was about nine hundred thousand, a little over nine hundred thousand in total premium. But what we were able to do is divert thirty percent of that, roughly three hundred thousand, and set that aside and say, "If a claim exceeds a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we're going to exhaust that pool of money that we would have otherwise paid in premium. If we don't, we keep it. We don't remit that, those dollars." So, in several years, we were able to retain three hundred thousand. And it happened probably three years, in three years where we were able to keep that three hundred thousand aside to ourselves. However, now, the dynamics have changed. We have a claimant that is, we have to, we have to address the best way to approach that we can. And by taking the pooling, by raising up the pooling, we're able to still remit our premium, and we hope through base management and everything else that's involved, that we're able to save on this one particular claimants possibly.
There's nothing, there's good access to the state? Because I know there used to be some funds that persons, say, to complete the school or let the insurance, because of state insurance, paid a lot more, but you still do something like that in the state?
This particular, there's not a, it's not like an end-stage renal disease where Medicare or something like that can step in. So, unless in, unless left the plan, then medicated or something like that, it could be available to... Are there, there's still...
There's nothing like a state plan where a person can shift to pay. She said pay thousand a month for this year, get something you can.
It's an individual's choice if they want to be on the health insurance plan. Okay, next slide. Just wanted to share with you some of the information from open enrollment. As you know, we had to make some difficult decisions during the open enrollment process, and as a result, we did anticipate some movement amongst the plans, and pretty much what we predicted did occur. With the fifty-one seventy-two plan, that's the plan that those folks will not, will no longer be able to have access to the Wellness Center. And as a result, and as we expected, many of those folks did choose to go to the fifty-one sixty-eight plan. In addition, the thirty-three fifty-nine plan, those premiums increased a little bit more greatly than the other plans, and as a result, some of those folks chose to move to the fifty-one sixty-eight. So, you'll see that thirty-three fifty-nine and fifty-one seventy-two, those numbers got smaller, and then the fifty-one sixty-eight, more folks migrated to that plan. But the bottom line overall is that we went from seven hundred and forty-five people on the plan to seven, I'm sorry, seventeen forty-five to seventeen twenty-eight. So, very little reduction. That's about what we have seen the past few years. So, even though it was a difficult year with the increases and the plan changes, I think what was found when folks went out there to kind of check around and compare is that we do still have a really good, really rich plan that is, you know, it's expensive like all other health insurance plans, but not anymore so. On the next slide, just to share with you the premium increases. Our premium revenue last year was approximately one million, one hundred fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-five. Because of the premium increases, the projected amount based on the number of folks on the specific plans for the 2017 year, we project that the monthly revenue will be one million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eight. So, that would generate approximately two point six million dollars over the course of a year in premium increase, the increased premium revenues.
Say that again, about two point, I didn't follow you.
Okay, so the difference between premiums, how much more we're going to generate per month times twelve months in a year, comes to about two point six million in additional premium revenue that we can expect in 2017. So, that should help us out a great deal. And again, we do have a plan in place where we are. That is the intent, is for us to start building our revenue back. Just to share with you an update on the no-shows. That is something we've been kind of hitting very hard and working on. You know that effective January one, we have the no-show fee that will be implemented. And just to give you an idea, so far for the month of January, we have approximately thirty no-shows so far this month. Only one person has hit the point where they're being imposed a fee. Because if you recall, they get one warning before they actually...
Just one.
I heard that right, correct? I mean, maybe just the threat of it alone.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
One warning.
That's good.
And that was strongly supported by the Health Insurance Committee and the school sites when I did my school visits, so. And I think Mr. Blocker touched on something as well, is that throughout the year, we've done a lot of educating. We've enhanced the Health Insurance Committee. I think that's attributed to the fact that we're in a better spot this time this year than we were last year. So, I think those things have been of a benefit and have been helpful as well. So, our last slide, ten, when we talk about the renewal of our contract. As you know, the Florida Blue contract is effective through December thirty-one of 2017. So, we do have an anticipated timeline of things we need to be doing currently and throughout this year in preparation. So, January and February, we are in discussions with Crown. We communicate regularly. We've had meetings with Brian. Got another meeting set up this week as well. So, we are having our preliminary discussions about this RFP, the renewal process. The anticipated timeline would be to issue an RFP on March first for our ASO, reinsurance and pharmacy. I would note that we have decided that probably as far as reinsurance with Symetra, that would need to wait until fall because they're going to want to know what our claims are running this current year before they're willing to give us any idea of what they would charge for 2018. But March first would be the anticipated target date for the ASO and the pharmacy.
Sherry, when's our next health insurance committee meeting?
There is one within the next week or two. It's the beginning, it's in early February.
Close up.
Yes, and we'll review this information with them at that point in time. Responses will be due back by April fourteenth. We will have another Health Insurance Committee meeting May second because we do keep them informed along the way, and we value the input that we get from those committee members. Then May fifth, we hope to have the evaluation and the interviews complete as far as the process. District personnel, myself, Mr. Blocker, we will evaluate the data along with Mr. Random and our Crown folks, and a recommendation would come before you in June as to how we feel we could best continue for 2017.
And you said that's enough time for us to get this process done and to get the RFPs with responses, and you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely.
This is a big deal, right?
Absolutely.
This is a, what is it, three-year contract we had? Four-year?
There were two years that were constantly in...
Right. So, we only get a shot at this every four years, so we've got to make sure...
You're right, it's very important. And as far as the timeline, I've talked with Susan Perry. She helps oversee this process as well. So, Mr. Blocker, Susan Perry, myself, Mr. Random, we've all discussed this and feel like this is a comfortable timeline.
And could you explain or have Brian explain a little bit about what he's going to be doing in this process in order that we can ensure that we're getting competitive rates and we're getting the best deal for... I mean, this is a big deal. There's a lot of, there's a lot on this board, on me, when I look at this health insurance. A lot of people don't understand these issues that we have to deal with. They just know the premiums are going up and the deductibles are going up, and they're paying more than they're getting less, right? So, I mean, this is important to me. I'm not, I'm just, I know it's important to all of us, but I just want to make sure that I know what you're doing for us, because you work for this board, you work for our district. And, you know, I want to see, I want to hear what this process is so that we know what's going to happen when we come time with Blue Cross, United, or whoever we get with to kind of fill the center with that.
No, you're absolutely right. It's a major, outside of payroll, this is your biggest, biggest intent. And it's not to be taken lightly. You've been with Florida Blue, Blue Cross, for quite some time. So, there will be, you know, we'll evaluate the networks. First off, I think if, you know, the networks and the way that the other competitors, if you will, United, Cigna, or Aetna, whoever chooses to respond, we will evaluate those networks, evaluate the claims discounts, which is important. I think that's terribly important to understand is what happens when a member goes to the hospital based, whether they have United, or Cigna, or Aetna, or whoever it may be, admin, there's others, or even a TDA, third-party administrator. There's out there that operate with their own... There's out there that operate with their own individual networks. It's terribly difficult to understand. When a member goes to an inpatient or outpatient facility, what's the cost of that? You may save a few dollars on the ASO fee, which is referred to as administrative services only. That's the fee you pay to a carrier to adjudicate and process your claims. So we'll look at that as well. You know, there may be some savings there or there may not be. Because quite frankly, the rate that you pay, and when I look at the enterprise of what Florida Blue and other, the rate that you pay per the size of your group is very good. Plus, you have a wellness contribution that you receive as well that is very good also. So when you look at that net result of your ASO fee, it is a very good, very good rate. Albeit, if you go through the RFP process, that'll even point itself out as well. However, looking at that, we may, there could be savings or there may not be savings on the fee that we pay. However, the more important piece, or where the huge chunk of our dollars go to is, as Sherry pointed out, ASO fee is just a little over $800,000, I believe, that we pay. Eight hundred, just over $800,000. We have 12.8 million in claims. So a very small portion is that fee, the larger pieces that claim. And that's where I think the focus, particularly in this process, will need to be is where, how do we bear claims? And who's got that the best decision?
The RFP, I'm assuming, obviously won't necessarily come back and show us that breakdown and maybe that model of, you know, okay, if a patient, you know, if one of our members goes here, goes here. That's, I'm assuming, what's going to happen after we get those RFPs in and then those are analyzed. Will that kind of model, you know, examples be something that you will do, I'm assuming, which is what you're kind of describing? And then, to me, that's going to be what's important to share with the committee so that they can see, you know, as that filters through, whoever, you know, is advantageous for this district to go with, to see that, so that they can do that. And then, as we know how vital they've been, Mr. Bishop, again, I thank you for expanding that committee because I think that helps share that message out that needs to be of, okay, yes, this one might not have been cheaper, but this is why it did come up cheaper, or not the case. But is that what we'll come back to?
What will happen in the process is we will give the claims identified, obviously, to the RFP. So whichever carriers will pick those up and decide. And in this area, most will probably, like your Aetna and your United will most likely respond. Admin is also, as a presence here, most likely will respond. So we would take that, or they would take the information that we would give, which would include our claims, they would process that and run it through their formulas and through their contract agreements and what they had with Citrus Memorial and other surrounding facilities and give us what we think that what the next year's claims would look like. They would run a projection. And also to Sherry's point, she's absolutely right. From a stop-loss perspective, that would need to wait. This is going, when you look at stop-loss, if we were to get a stop-loss quote in May or January of 2018, there's going to be so much trend that they're going to build in and they're going to use all kinds of modeling. And it's a better, it's a better approach to use our actual claims where we're actually running when we put that out. And the turnaround time for an RFP versus stop-loss is very quick.
Who's going to analyze the RFP information? Who's going to give us the data? Is that going to be Sherry and Mr. Blocker? Or is it going to be you? Who's going to do that? Is it going to be a team? Is it going to be a team of people? So will it be?
It will be the committee reviewing all the syllabus. You know, along with Brian, we can be right there with this helping evaluate the information, make the best decisions. It's like I told you, the ASO fee is only one piece of it. That claims data is the piece that we got to put out there to show.
Right, so there'll be a group of minds working together to look at this and analyze.
Sure, sure. And I'm not receiving the RFP. The RFP will come to purchasing through the district. Sherry will get them, we'll log them in to see if they're responsive, responsible RFPs, you know, and so forth. And then we'll come up as a team and go through them. And if we, through the Insurance Committee, have a selection of, whether we narrow it down or look at all of them.
Interview them.
Okay, and so how are we going to relate that? You're going to relate that information to the board every step of the way here, right? Because what I don't want to have is I don't want to have a week to make a decision. I want to have all the information. I don't want, I mean, I would like to, I prefer to have a month. I, well, I mean.
We're not sure how much time they're going to give us.
Well, that's the thing. That's what I'm saying.
Is there enough time right here to effectively bring it to the board on June 13? So the district and Crown will evaluate the data at May 8. We would have that time for about three weeks where that information can be sent into the board to get off the agenda.
Three weeks.
I mean, how much time am I going to have to review the information?
Three weeks from the time we receive the information of the information is to the board? So what does that take, about two weeks for the information to come in?
No, no, that's one, that's one week.
Normally, we have one week for the agenda.
That's only one week.
But if we want more time, we can specify.
Here's a question, is it possible, given the timeline on the May? Well, we don't have a May workshop now. Well, there's nothing that says that if it comes forward, but we can't, you know, meet in the morning on one morning and get that and just happen. I have no problem with that.
The reason why, looking at the June date, because if that decision is made, now we got to be prepared for getting everything ready for open enrollment. That role is right around the corner, getting, establishing your premiums, getting people ready for open enrollment, because that process starts.
Right, well, honestly, I'd like to have two weeks, I'd like to have two weeks so I can analyze the information. So is that something that, if we were to do that, I mean, maybe Mr. Kenny's right, maybe we should schedule a special meeting or a, not a special workshop or something, because I just want to make sure. Because there's going to be questions we're all going to have about it. I mean, this, you know.
I think just if we, if we schedule a May, you know, workshop like we would, and just do it in the morning.
If it gets to that point, we may look at a May workshop. Typically, we don't have it because of graduation. But we could have a special one.
Yeah, and I recognize that, that's why I'm just saying, if this warrants that, then we can handle it that way. That would give, you know, at least two weeks.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. And the worst thing is, we can always, you can take it to the June, we always have a special meeting, you can take it to the June workshop special meeting day too. So that way you have like, you can have like three or four weeks to look at it.
Okay, so you're, yeah, now, you're saying you can present it at, in June, at the regular meeting, and then we vote on it at a special meeting in the workshop. See, that's even better. I mean, that'd give us even more time.
Well, you just, that's, I mean, critical because then you got to start making a decision for open enrollments.
Well, and that's something, pretty, I would look at that. That would be something I would.
And I think Mr. Dodd's right, just because we know this becomes a challenging message that we have to get out. And we want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence as a board and that that's looked at. So I think that's, I'm with Mr. Dodd, I think that that's.
We can, this is just, you know, our guide, but certainly something could be changed if we can look at that.
So what is the timeline of our, of the June?
Well, I'm hearing either try to have a special meeting at a workshop time in May, or we present the information at the June board meeting and then have a special meeting at the workshop to vote on it. One or the other, just to make sure you have plenty of time.
I think that just depends on whether, how best to.
Very good. Any additional questions?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we are to high school directions.
Mr. Rolland is going to present some topics to the.
I wondered what he was doing here.
We're not asking the board to approve or disapprove any of our recommendations, but we do need to get your input because these things will come back to you to approve in the student progression plan in June. And if you have some hard feelings about them or strong opinions about them one way or the other, we need to know that now because some of these decisions will affect how we staff, how we master schedule. And those things start next month. So even.
Actually, last month.
So, I'll let David take it from there, but just, so, that's what we're looking for today, is some guidance and direction from the board and how we move forward.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I guess there's some advantage to follow a big, deep topic of insurance. This is like light reading compared to that.
That was well planned, don't worry.
A little bit of background on the high school directions. This committee, as far as I know, has been around forever. It typically happens in the fall, or at least before the first semester's over, because high schools do start scheduling, start the process in December. So we get together, we invite representatives from every school, district folks, and we have a school board member that participates in that as well. Anyone can submit any topic they want to discuss. They're usually curriculum-related, you know, as our current sequence, of course, is are those working, you know, what changes? So it's pretty wide open and we have a lot of discussion. And then by the time that it's over with, we usually have maybe a few recommendations. And so that's what I'm going to bring to you today. And I have some people from other departments that they have, some of the topics we talked about are related, so their expertise is with us today if needed to speak. The first one, as you can see, the first slide has a list of who's on the committee. The first topic is about world cultural geography. And this is a topic that comes up every year that I participated in the High School Directions Committee because that is a Citrus County requirement. It's not a state requirement. Typically, in the past, the commentary is usually, you know, why do we have one more requirement when the state requires so much already? But that hasn't been enough to.
We don't have a sheet this year.
We don't have a sheet on that. You don't have a sheet on what?
What you're talking about right now? I'm in the LA report.
Which sheet do you not have?
Keep going.
We haven't got to that yet. I'm giving you verbal background. Yeah, typically, on a.
You jump around. And we're all friends, but looking for, that's okay.
I apologize, but usually when I do a PowerPoint, I don't like to read the PowerPoint team. I usually like to talk through it, you know.
We, most of this can read, this is good.
I'll try to talk most. I'm going to give you some background information before I get to the world cultural geography. But I'm giving you the background, is that comes up every year and it's usually related to one more requirement by the county that the state doesn't require. That's usually not enough to sway that committee to suggest that, to recommend it. This year, there was some other factors involved that made it a more viable option for that committee to recommend. And that has to do with the least restrictive environment. And that's the sheet that you have in front of you. We get a report from the state each year. And Ms. Kirby receives that report that tells us, how are we doing as far as percentage of students' day in their least restrictive environment? The state recommends 80% of their day be spent in a least restrictive environment. And in a nutshell, you know, those students, ESC students with a disability, need to learn to be independent, so that is the state's recommendation. Well, this year we got the report and it was not favorable to the district as far as us meeting that goal. So Ms. Kirby put a group together, let's talk about it, and let's analyze why that is and what we can do about it. And one thing that we do know is that at the high school, when you have a four-by-four block, if one period is a resource period or, you know, strictly ESC period, there is 75% runoff at that. So solutions that were discussed, and again, that's mainly at the high school. It's not just the high school problem. There are some middle schools that don't meet that. And I'm not sure about elementary, but elementary's doing pretty well as far as least restrictive environment. So we got together and wanted some possible solutions for that four-by-four block. And one solution is to either split that block in half into what they call skinnies, that's the scheduling terminology that we like to use at the high school, or do an A-day, B-day schedule. Basically, that limits the amount of time that a student, it's not a 90-minute chunk of time that they spend if they do have a learning strategies or a resource class. But to make a skinny work, you have to pick two courses that a student can go back, you know, one half during this course and one half during that course. That's the way that scheduling is done efficiently.
Excuse me, Mr. Rolland, are we doing that a little bit with algebra? Algebra A?
Algebra, we do one A, one B, but that's broken into one semester, one A, next semester, one B. So it's those students that are.
Still a 90-minute.
Yeah, need a little bit more time to comprehend that. So it's not actually.
So we're sort of doing it, but not exactly, is that what you're saying?
Not exactly. Not exactly, it's not what we call a skinny.
Okay.
Because they still go for the 90 minutes. They just do it twice as long for instance, in going an entire year, which is like two years.
And you got a grade for one A and you got a grade for one B. So as they're having this conversation about ESC students doing the two skinnies, they started looking at the reading course. All of our level one and two students are asked to be in a reading course. And ESC students that come to the high school also typically have a reading course. So started looking at level one and two students and ESC students. So one part of the skinny was discussed when we looked at that reading course. And we know that many of those ESC students have a learning strategies course or a resource course in which it is strictly ESC students. So talked about the first part being a reading inclusion course. And then the second half would be a learning strategies type course. And then, as we discussed, that will be a great idea for our level one and two regular ed students as well. And I pulled some data. Right now, we have 20% of our ninth grade students have at least one F. So, and if you look into that data a little bit further, you're going to see that many of those students are level one and two students. And we know that an eighth to ninth grade transition is very difficult for those students. So the discussion said, you know, we really could do a great service to the students if not only ESC students getting a learning strategies type course, but those level one and two at-risk students getting a scaffolding course in which they could be taught study skills, organizational skills, have some peers come into the class and do some tutoring. As we discussed it though, the scheduling APs that were at the meeting said, you know, that sounds great, we can do some of that, but we're limited because we don't have the units. And I know right away, we're always, the last many years, we've been under tight financial constraints because of state budgeting. So I knew that wasn't going to be an option to add, just add more units. So once somebody came up with a solution, well, let's look at world cultural geography. Let's waive that requirement for our, for our students. We would still, the conversation was, we still want to offer it for our level three, four, and five students, but it was determined that there would be more of a benefit for those level one and two students to have a strategies or an avid type course for struggling students.
That's interesting, if you're an ID student, you're not going to take that course anyway.
Correct.
Because you're going to go right to AP World History. So at least in La Canto, that certainly, many of those students is not going to have that.
So if you're following along with your slides, we've moved through LRE solutions, what is a big need for high schools? And then we moved through possible solutions. And then the recommendation slide, recommendations by High School Directions Committee, you know, waive the requirement for world cultural geography slash AP Human and continue to offer both but not require it. And this would allow that flexibility for those level one and two students, particularly in the ninth grade. I know some of our schools want to try to do that for 10th grade students as well. If we waived that requirement, we would be able to apply some of those units for those students. The question is, is what does that do for geography? And I have Ms. Vidi in our social studies, Tosa, that's heavily involved, our social studies teacher. She's going to come up and talk to us about what does that mean as far as geography standards? Are we just losing out on geography for those level one and two students? And so.
We saw your picture in the paper. Awesome.
Great article.
Thank you. Now, I'm still like a close, go ahead.
Good morning. I believe that in your, in your packet somewhere, you have, these are the world cultural geography standards for that world cultural geography course. And if you look through them, you'll see that there are actually very few geography standards. There's American history, there's a ton of world history, there's language arts, there's math, there, I mean, you have to go to the bottom of the second page, top of the third page, those are the only geo, like pure geography standards in this course. So what I did was I looked at the other required social studies courses in high school, world history, US history, econ and government, and this, this page right here says geography standards in world cultural geography. These are geography standards that are also addressed in world history and United States history. So you'll see that there is only one standard, and that's G14, that is unique to world cultural geography. All the others are in world history or United States history or both.
So are you saying that we're not even going to offer world cultural geography? Or are we going to offer it as a...
Now, all the schools in that meeting said we would, they, they want to continue to offer world cultural geography in ninth grade. It's just not a county requirement for every student.
Got it.
Typically, when you schedule at the high school, I know many of you know this because you're familiar with scheduling, is our high schools, they want to take a course, they want to take a group of courses that most students in that grade level will move through. Because if they don't do that, it's very difficult to make a schedule. So many of them like to keep that world cultural geography in place because that, you know, because they like the course, but it also allows them, the schedules can be built a little bit easier because any students will follow through that course.
I just want to be sure of one thing, while I got both of you in the microphone. World cultural geography, ninth grade, most of our level ones and twos at the high school level are stuck in reading, sometimes even for four years. So I'm wondering if we do the skinny and we include the reading and the learning strategies class, knowing that these children are going to be in these skinnies maybe for four years, would that increase your number to the eighty percent that you're looking for?
We, we would, we probably, we wouldn't have the capability to offer that same model every year.
Okay.
Just the fact that if we waive the world cultural, that would free up some units that we could do it in ninth grade and probably some in 10th grade, but beyond that, we probably...
You're talking just the skinnies for the ninth grade and possibly the 10th?
Correct.
But, I'm sorry. But the reality is that if it's no longer required and if the high school principal has to look at their teaching units, the reality is that they may not offer world cultural geography in ninth grade.
You still have to have somebody, you have to have someplace to put the kids. So what, unless you have something else you want to offer in that place, you still have to have electives for students to go into.
I think you'd see...
But you wouldn't use the same amount of teachers though, would you?
Yeah, you would have a few more teachers.
You wouldn't need as many geography teachers because you're also now, you're going to offer the strategies class, so somebody's got to teach that.
You'll still have the same number of teaching units.
Yeah.
You're just going to have to split differently, and that's true. You wouldn't necessarily need as many social studies.
Correct.
But then what you're saying is though too, they would not drop world cultural geography as an offer.
We offer other social studies classes now that are not required. We've offered law, we've offered psychology, different history classes.
Contemporary history.
So we've offered other electives that students are interested in social studies that aren't required, because we still need electives for kids to take.
If we were to, in my opinion, if we were ever get to the point that we wanted to get away from world cultural geography being offered whatsoever, that'd be another high school directions committee. Like if we met next year and the committee said, you know, we just really don't like the world cultural geography, let's look at Asian history, you know, to be facetious, but we'd have that discussion because we try to be consistent across the campuses. So right now, someone wouldn't or should not be able just to go independently and say, oh, we're not going to do it. They waived that, we're not going to do it. Right now, the agreement is, we're all going to stick with it, it will be offered. There will be some exceptions, there will be some students that for whatever reason, it just may not meet their needs and we make that individual exception. But as a general rule, we're going to still offer the world cultural geography, AP human, human history or human geography for those students.
And we do that now, I mean, I can tell you one of the things that was a challenge is if you're not, you know, if you're at La Canto, we have a split number of, we don't, we don't offer it, world geography to as many students because we're doing AP world history. And so that's, I think, going to continue to be, but I think most of this is about flexibility is what this is, and, and I think that's really the key of this. One of the, I think, things we've talked about in the past is the state has continued to put more and more graduation requirements onto our students, and should we be adding to that or should we be trying to provide as many flexibility and options?
And that's kind of what I wanted to hear discussed with, with Ms. Powers and Ms. Bryant Zieg, and maybe you, Thomas, I don't know, were you on the board when they passed the requirement for geography for graduation?
I wasn't, but I know I brought this up before and I, I can tell you what I remember Ms. Deutman said.
What did she say?
Ms. Deutman's comment was really what I think Ms. Beatty did a great job explaining, and that was the importance of making sure some of those standards were taught to students. And I think what we've recognized now is those, they are being captured, particularly with that issue of the American government, the, you know, the social...
There was a half-credit requirement at one time for world geography. In this district, I was the principal at Citrus High at the time, we taught, we wanted to teach world geography as a full credit because nine-week courses are hard to schedule. We wanted to teach it as a full credit and, and our goal was, at the time, we were putting a big move on trying to bring our reading scores up. That was the start of the H, the FCAT, those kind of things that we were starting to get the ratings on. The high schools thought we could infuse the reading into the world geography course, and that would be a good place to teach everybody reading in world geography. That really never took off because again, most geography, world geography teachers focus on teaching world geography and they didn't want to focus on teaching reading as part of world geography.
And I think you can go the other way because most, and I've done a lot of those little reading classes for these little guys, you can't take some of your informational text out of a world geography class and include it with a reading teacher. But I understand the history teachers not being able to do what the...
Reading teachers can do.
So, I mean, we could, we could have a, the ninth grade teacher pair up with this skinny class and still...
But that's the history behind how, how we had gotten there, Mr. Dogg, was, and you are right, the reason we're, you know, is it going to impact the number of social studies teachers, and that's why we're having this discussion now, because as we look at units for next year, there may be a situation where a teacher or a principal at Chris River High says, I have an open geography unit, I'm going to set a post in that as geography, I'm going to look for somebody to teach that strategies class instead. Because they will have fewer sections of geography, but they won't do away with geography.
So it sounds like that the intent at the time wasn't just about geography, but it was about improving reading then?
That was also our focus at the time, why we added the second half-credit.
I mean, because I kind of admire the district for adding a requirement, you know, we, we talk about how we do not like to have to be, you know, lived by all these state rules and requirements. We want for local control, which is what we've done here, but yet we want to kind of give that up now, but on, but, you know, and then I do also hear that a lot of people complain about, you know, students who don't know where Texas is or don't know where Massachusetts is or, you know, and so that geography need, but, you know, I, I understand the need to be flexible though too. And Ms. Powers, I was just curious, because I know you're going to...
I'm very much for world geography and very much for government statistics.
Yes.
But not just as a, you know, not just to do it.
But yet always...
Because of the world, we live in today, we don't have to say...
The curriculum for the world geography is, is not just on maps and New England or Texas, it's, it's about social cultures around the world, and I think that's an important curriculum.
But yeah, what Ms. Beatty's pointing out is that only one standard is not covered in the world history, in American history, what class was that?
It's, it's not covered in either of those courses. One standard. But it's also a pretty broad standard.
Right.
Where it's just saying, they're basically looking at giving information from the map for whatever purpose, so anytime you look at a map, it could be, you know, addressing that standard. I also, you know, that's another reason why I included this, you know, for if there was ever pushback saying, why aren't we teaching geography in our schools, is a list of every geography standard K through eight. So it is being taught in every grade level until the student gets to high school, not in isolation, but within those social studies courses.
And we're still, we're moving forward with a, a new geography textbook this year, correct? So I mean, we're still going to, it's going to be part of our textbook adoption this year. But at the end of the day, this is going to impact, this change would impact our level one, level two readers. And those are the students that were having the most difficult time getting through to graduation. So I think geography is very important as well, but so is the fact that we can get them through graduation. And fortunately, when they come into ninth grade and they're a level one reader, that's a challenge to get them to the point where they're going to be able to meet the graduation requirement in order to graduate from high school. So the schools need that flexibility in order to, to move those students forward.
And I, and I think, because I agree with Mr. Dogg, we do, we talk about local control now, this is almost one we feel like we're kind of giving up. My feeling is we're giving, we're not in a sense, and maybe I'm rationalizing, but by instead, we're giving it to the schools. And what we're saying is, we're trying to give it to those families, to those guidance counselors, and to those schools to make that decision that's best for the student instead of, you know, saying, well, this fits for everybody. We know it doesn't even at ID. And frankly, it's not just ID, I think that there's students that would have created a different pathway for themselves. I know my own son would have used a different pathway to have, instead of taking, you know, world geography or, or AP human geography, would have taken AP world history in his freshman year, but couldn't do that unless he was in ID. You know, so that creates some, some interesting dynamics that one group can do it. And the reason that, by the way, they do that is because the state legislature has permitted that as a, as an option for them to do. So...
And again, we're, we're not asking for the flexibility to water down any curriculum or to keep kids from being exposed to anything, but it's to allow us to give the guidance counselors and the schools the ability to try to formulate the best educational plan to get that student, that, that level one or level two student through high school, which is, which is our ultimate goal.
And Mr. Rowland, during high school directions, which by the way, I just want to say, you did a wonderful job facilitating that meeting. It's always a very positive meeting. You have all these principals from, you know, representatives of their administrations from every high school. You have representatives from every guidance office in those high school levels. We truly have, we have parent stakeholders. We, we had them all at the table, and I think on this issue, it was very unanimous in their recommendation on that very issue. So I, I understand Ms. Powers and I am totally in agreement that these are standards that need to be. I just, I feel like that if I kind of lean towards, I think we need to let the schools and guidance counselors have to have...
No, no, referring to the world cultural geography, what I was referring to...
Oh, we're sorry.
...is geography and civics and government. I mean, I think, I think the school is doing with a, a new look, what I always, right now, I don't know, and they don't have any, they don't have any, it's just not taught. I think they need to go back. And we look at Washington, see if Bill's been casted, she doesn't know how they get there, how they get to committee, how they get in on the floor, we don't.
And the great news is, maybe one thing that, that our state government did well is, is that civics requirement, middle school, they're doing a great job in our middle schools of teaching the governmental processes that take place. I know just from my personal kids going through those courses, the conversations they have with me that I've never come out of their mouth enough and I find very interesting. So I know the civics course at the middle school and even the government courses at the high school are having an impact on our students and are making them aware of our governmental processes.
Now, Ms. Beatty looked like, sure, her eyes got a little bit when she, she seemed worried. I don't know, but you heard, I'm just a bill going through your head or Hamilton. But would you say too, that we're, we are making strides in, in those directions as far as civics?
Absolutely, in civics. And I've spoken with, you know, at La Canto High School, they offer world history AP, I'm sorry, AP world, US government to ID students in the 10th grade. And so those 10th graders currently are the first group that have gone through the required civics course in the EOC. And that teacher says that it's night and day to, to students she's had. Now, they haven't quite gotten to the 12th grade yet for the current US government, but there is a huge difference. They come in with so much more background knowledge, you know, it's carrying over hopefully into United States history when they take that EOC, so yes.
I guess, I don't know, the presentations will, they, the countries of the food, of history and all that kind of stuff, might have twelve countries of, of students. And they have really an understanding of what's going on, you know that they know this stuff, but I would like to see our students have a grasp of all of this. I use my own, old, old daughter as an example, ask her about any country. She would be able to run in the hand of the history of that country for about hundreds of years. Now, part of what she does in life is to have that knowledge, you're dealing with the negotiating with people, you have to have the knowledge, you know, that came from, wasn't born to them, but she was always like that, just a girl of interest in the history of our world and the different countries, and it changes so rapidly now that she, you almost, you know, throw away the textbook that you bought yesterday because there's a new country in the world, but we need that, we need it as self-protection and nothing else. We need to know who we're going to be, who we're going to be. So I think one of the most important things, I'm good at English, I travel Shakespeare, but I know that one of the most important things is to have a knowledge of different countries and how they function, where they are in the world, what their philosophy is, and how our, how our own country works and the rule, what the rules are and how it should work, the rules are not to go out and burn down buildings, but the rules are the subordinated process to get things done, and we should know what our processes is.
I 100% agree with that, and I want it to be clear that I am 100% want, you, any sort of social studies always to be taught, but if we're looking at those level ones and twos coming into the ninth grade that are struggling readers, that perhaps this skinny program would benefit them to help their reading, test-taking strategies so that when they do take a United States VOC requirement, they might be better prepared. That might better prepare them than a, than a world cultural geography course.
Ms. Beatty, one thing too, and I'm, I'm quite serious when I ask and suggest this, when can we look towards your talents also bringing forth Hamilton in Citrus County? Because I think you would do a fabulous job at orchestrating that and you would blend both of your talents.
Would have to be a lot of editing, John.
We could do that. I've seen the, I've seen the high school edited versions. Yes?
I have one question about the logistics because obviously we're focusing on the option for a skinny rather than an AB schedule, which I really, maybe is, I did that when I was in high school, I didn't recommend that until I kind of go. But can we reach this percentage that we're looking for when we have to change the children's class? It's going to take them, depending upon the campus, it's going to take them five to seven minutes to move from one classroom to another. Is that going to be, do we still get credit for keeping them in a class for the eighty-four minutes?
Yeah, I mean, unlike him, they, I mean, it would be in their best interest to try to schedule and the closest proximity to each other, and most of the time when they do something like this, they would, they would look at proximity. And they may be use the AB schedule as well if it, if it meets their need. There are some issues with, I don't want to go into a different tangent, but there's some issues with Skyward as far as scheduling skinnies that makes it, that we're going to have to work through, but if last resort, it can't be worked through, we can still do the option with an AB schedule and it still does that amount of time. And we're not, we're not trying to solve all the least restrictive environment at, at one time, and we know this is a process. We've been... We've been in this boat for a long time as far as least restrictive environment. This is the first time when Ms. Kirby brought this forward and said, you know, "Let's have a real conversation with all our stakeholders of how we can start to solve this." Because, you know, not make any negative comments to anyone else, but we've never really had that conversation in the past about how do we fix it? And so it's going to help us work to that direction. If we do this next year, we know that percentage will get better. You know, will it get us to the 80%? Maybe not, but it's going to get us a lot closer than we currently are. And right now, the state doesn't have any penalties for not meeting that, but you know, at some point, you know, the state says, "You need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this." And then one day they say, "We're going to take away funding away if you're not there." So this is like a big first step in working in that direction to solve that problem, the restrictive environment.
And we could do an AB, I think, the way they talked about blended within the block in this type of situation, as opposed to like ID's AB where it's a second period A.
Right. In essence, this would be just that one period. One day I'm going to go to reading, next day I'm going to learn strats and use this alternate back.
So that one period is going to be the one, let's say, that's AB, not?
Not the whole skinny.
Not the whole skinny.
Well, for the Level Ones, I would recommend the skinny because they're holding their attention for 84 minutes, meaning non informational.
We totally agree with you, and that's what we're going to work towards. But just that, and that's why I put that AB in there is just as a fallback, if for some reason it just can't be scheduled like we'd want it to within Skyward without a huge headache, then we have that as like a fallback. Any other questions for Ms. Beatty? I know she was.
Yeah, Hamilton.
Hamilton.
Just as a side note, when we were given instructional materials to review, there were very few options for World Cultural Geography. Because.
Were there?
One. There was two, one of which is what we already have, and there was no digital component whatsoever. So that was out because that's ninth grade. Others were not aligned to Florida standards. So this is another factor that went into this discussion.
I want to thank you both and everybody in the audience for being here, helping us with this.
So just to clarify, is your direction, because again, our high schools are scheduling now, are we in favor of moving this direction? Because ultimately you will see this in the student progression plan.
I'm for it.
Are you?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This slide, and I have a few more that were brought by the High School Directions Committee, but they weren't quite as heavy as this one. The slide after Thoughts is AP Exams. When we, and the High School Directions Committee, it was brought forward that, I forget which, one of the schools brought it forward is, you know, "Why don't we test everybody?" And we had a lot of discussion about why don't we test everyone? And we all agreed that it is, we do want all of our students.
Maybe you might back up to make sure all the board knows the expectation right now and what it is, just for clarification.
Okay. In our student progression plan, it has been written that all students must take the AP exam.
And take an AP course.
That take an AP course, yes. So, and not every district requires that. And so one of our schools brought that, and they wanted a lot of flexibility within AP exams, but the committee, as we talked, did not agree with that. If a kid's taking an AP course, the committee felt like they should take the exam. And then it was brought up, well, there's some extenuating circumstances for some students, a very few students that we would like that flexibility with. You know, for example, you know, a student has a medical problem or misses, you know, several weeks of school, just struggling or some personal issues, it would allow that flexibility if we, with extenuating circumstances, a student may opt out with the principal approval and with parental communication as well. So it's not going to be an option that a teacher can say, "I don't want these 20 kids to take it. They have desks in my class, I don't think they should take it." It's not that extenuating circumstance. It would be, again, a truly personal situation with that individual student that our principals ask that flexibility with. So we would look to, in the student progression plan, change the language that they must to something where the extenuating circumstances may opt out with the principal approval.
And just as a reminder to the board, Florida is one of the few states that the expectation is that it's an open enrollment to AP courses. That's not the same way everywhere in the country. A lot of times you have to be recommended by a teacher to take an AP course or meet certain requirements. In Citrus, not only do we have the open enrollment of the AP, we also have the expectation that they will take the AP exam. Again, that's not the case everywhere. A lot of times you have to be recommended to then also take the exam. That's why it's sometimes when we're communicating with the public, when our exam passes aren't nearly as high as maybe some other areas, that's because we have open enrollment and open expectations that everyone will take the test. Interestingly, and we get dinged a little bit with our schools' grade as a result of that. We have been willing to say, our longitudinal data shows us that if you get a one or a two on an AP exam, you typically don't require, or at least 60% of our kids are not requiring intervention at the college level because they're learning those learning strategies. But it comes at a price. And I think that the comment, which I thought was interesting, is they still seem to want to have the expectation that students are going to take that AP exam, but they did want some flexibility to not make it a mandatory piece. Is that?
That's correct. Thanks for adding all those pieces. That is very correct. I think over the last 10 years, we've increased the number of AP students dramatically. We've seen the passage rate of AP courses or AP tests remain pretty steady over the years, maybe even a slight increase even though we've added more students to take an AP course. But yes, the schools just want that little bit of flexibility with those students who have special circumstances not to require them to take the course.
Or we have students who want to take the AP course, but they don't want to take the exam.
Yeah. And I believe we've learned too that statute requires that if they don't want to take the AP course, but they want to take the AP exam, they are entitled to.
And that was a part of the new legislation last year, that if a student wants to, what they call CAT a course, they can take the AP exam if they want to pay for it without taking the course.
We have close to a chance.
Correct. And if at any point, any of these, you know, you're feeling like it's not a direction we want to go, please speak up. If not, otherwise I will move on to the next topic. Nine-week exams at high schools. As you may or may not know, our high schools require nine-week exams for all students. The state passed a statute that in those courses that have a state EOC, you cannot give a final exam, but we have skirted that issue, if you will, by offering nine-week exams. At that meeting, it was discussed that we discontinue nine-week exams in those courses that have a state EOC. So Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, Biology, and US History, currently they take nine-week exams. And the schools are recommended to, as we all want to cut back on testing, is not require a nine-week exam for those students that are taking their state EOC courses. It does not apply to ELA ninth and 10th grade, but it does to those courses listed on that slide.
Like EOC, still going to be 30% their overall rating class?
Yes.
And here's an interesting thing is, and I'm generally would say, I'm always for reducing the number of mandated tests and this along those lines. If though Representative Zulo is successful in providing a portfolio option, these types of exams that we currently have could be applied to that data. And I'm not saying that it's a decision today, that maybe if it passes, there'll be plenty of enough time to correct that, but I would say that's just something we might want to look at. Because if portfolio becomes an option for high school promotion, then we're going to want to make sure that we have data points that we can do that. So.
I think about, I would, maybe that's, that's.
Oh, that's exactly right. Good point, Ms. Powers.
I'm just concerned, especially about our math teachers at the high school level. They seem to have a lot of trouble with these EOC kids. They're in remediation during the summer and stuff like that. So I really am not, I did not like the kids having to do nine-week exam, which kind of 20% and then 30% EOC and 50% in the grade, and then wonder why they didn't do homework because they got it for nothing. And so, but I'm concerned that the state won't back down on that 30% because that's, I've seen so many of them, they pass that nine-week exam and they're past the class, they come in with that marginal score. And I'm just concerned about maybe.
Could we instead, on those exams, that they don't count towards 20%? If they're in those courses that have EOCs?
And we could offer them the option to take a 20% exam, reduce their grade up. Because the teacher, the teacher in the classroom is only going to test what they taught. I don't think EOCs is that important, not here, just standards, but somehow they're not matching these demands. So I'm concerned that we get so many of our kids that are running right there at that line, and that final exam is really important to them getting their.
And that was part of the conversation. It works both ways though. Sometimes it brings the kid up, sometimes it brings a student down. But I think ultimately, what won over the committee is that, you know, we're testing kids a lot.
Oh, yeah.
And it still doesn't circumvent a teacher from giving their unit test or some summary type test, you know, over a couple of units. They still have that ability to assess the students, see what they know versus their content. And they still have the ability to weigh their gradebook, how they see fit. If I'm a teacher and I want my test to be, my unit test to be 50% of my grade, they can still do that. So it's just not one final test in addition to that EOC. The next one is, on your slide, is WTC dual enrollment. And they had some ideas that they brought about at the meeting that would impact our high schools. And so they're here today, they're going to talk to us a little bit about this dual enrollment plan that they're considering.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brian has way more experience than I do, so he's going to come up here. We've been doing some research with the change in administration of WTC a year and a half ago. We kind of, we're not in the, David might, with a lot of other districts. We are one of the few districts in the state that does not have dual enrollment, per dual enrollment for our high school students. So if you look at your slide that David provided you, it lists the advantages. So if you just look at those for a second, basically, that post-secondary schools, it's easier for them to go to a post-secondary school and receive that credit. If they're attending WTC as a dual enrollment student, it's easier for that articulation process to go to CF or Pasco-Hernando or one of the other.
You explain.
Sure. Dual enrollment, and Brian's probably bear this eye, but dual enrollment, right now our students are considered shared students. So basically, when any high school student attends WTC, they are under a secondary course code. Okay? So they're taking a high school credit class, basically. They do get high school credit for coming to WTC. In the case of dual enrollment, they would still be coming, they could still come to us part-time like they do now, two and a half hours a day, they could come full-time like some of them do now. But those credits, instead of just receiving high school credit, they would actually receive college credit. And how that helps WTC and our high schools is those are considered acceleration courses, just like when they go to CF for dual enrollment to get that college credit, those count as acceleration points for our high schools to improve their high school grades. So that would, by allowing WTC to have dual enrollment, also, those high school students would be earning those acceleration points for most of the courses that they take at WTC. It would have to be a course that either leads to an industry certification or college credit, which all of our courses do, but it also has to be on what's called the KEAP funding list. And most of our courses that they would take at WTC are on the KEAP funding list. So those students would be earning that high school acceleration point, and they'd also be earning that college credit and/or industry certification. Some other advantages with additional funding is actually a win-win. The district still receives the FTE for those high school students because they're still enrolled in the high schools. But then we also, at WTC, receive funding through our WITIS reporting for the number of post-secondary hours in instruction. And also for any student that earns industry certification, if they're on that KEAP funding list, we also receive funding for that.
And I think that's different than our college dual enrollment.
Yes, it is. Yeah, for personal, we have enough other perks. Anything else? Let's see, Brian, did you want to add as far as advantages?
One of the big advantages to both the students and instructors is the unification of the curriculum. Right now, the high school curriculum, we're teaching it, we're teaching the high school curriculum within our typical post-secondary class, there are differences in this curriculum. And sometimes it's very minimal. A lot of times it's just a difference in pacing, and there's not a lot of logic to lock those differences off. By unifying this, where the students are doing the same curriculum, whether they're high school through the post-secondary, the students in the classroom are following the same curriculum, benchmarking, matching the same set of skills, that makes it easier for the instructor, makes it better for the student. So it helps in that regard.
This sounds like a good deal, it really does. I mean, it sounds like there's some, you know, some things here that have a lot of merit. One of my questions though is, when you talk about college credit, when you talk about the industry certification, I understand that side, but how do they, how, you said that every class, they're eligible for, are you talking about WTC program? Or are you talking about?
No, not every program to count as acceleration points for the high school. Those students that are coming over to take dual enrollment classes at WTC either have to be earning industry certification, which all our programs do, or high school credit, I mean, college credit, sorry. We have about eight, about half of our programs that we have articulation agreements with the state, the state has them with the community colleges, that they earn college credit, that they could go on and go to CF or Pasco-Hernando and get an AS degree, take those classes.
So like the nursing program, I take it might be that, or what would be?
Right. Nursing program is different though, because nursing, our medical field's like never seen massage therapy and of course, while enforcement, but the nursing programs, the students can't take when they're in high school. So we can't dual enroll with those. They have to be, in the state, tenured enrollment at high school. So an example would be automation production technology. They can earn up to 15 college credits if they could take to CF and get an engineering technology degree, an AS degree or.
What's another example of that?
Welding technology?
Welding.
No criminal justice, they have to be at high school, so can't dual enroll.
Medical administrative specialist has a particular career, communications, associate design degree, the public service. I don't know, the management, the cultural career, similar.
Computer.
Cyber security.
That's right.
What about for, what's it called?
Culinary, that's one also, yes.
Culinary.
Culinary, they go on a list. But the reason we have done this is the funding model evidently changed about three years ago. So like I said, just with change in place, we did not start doing this, we had learned the last year and a half, like doing this research and learning about the current technical world, that, you know, we're not taking advantage of some of the things that we could take advantage for funding, but also for our high school students to be able to get that credit, then also for our high schools to earn that, those acceleration points. So really, it's a win-win.
Does this also open up an occasional more seat for that high school? Because I know you were limited by certain things.
Well, as far as space, we still have the same amount of space. Some courses that they can't do dual enrollment for would be cosmetology. They can come over, we do have high school students that are there full-time doing, taking our cosmetology program, but because that is not a KEAP funded program, they cannot do the dual enrollment. But there seems to be misinformation about how many spaces we have. Right now, we have been offering five spaces in the morning and five spaces in the afternoon for every one of our programs. So if you take that and multiply, you know, 10 times, even just the 13 that they could earn, the high school students get, that's 130 spaces. We're not filling those up.
I was just going, that was going to be my question. So you have space.
Yes, we have space for high school students.
So maybe this will help fill in those spaces.
Well, we're hoping, because we're hoping also this will help the parents and students realize, you know, that we're not an institute anymore, we are a technical college, and they can go there and get the same equal status as CF and earn that credit and move forward.
Mr. Melon, are we still doing on some of those, like your parent universities or however they're doing, we were doing like a thing of showing kids how AP dual enrollment courses positively impact them. If we are, I would say we probably need to incorporate WTC going out for that very purpose. We were doing like a thing of showing kids how AP dual enrollment courses positively impact them. We are, I would say, we probably need to incorporate WTC's building out for that very purpose.
Have you been to the academy?
Is it okay?
Yeah, we actually attended the academy night at Citrus Springs Middle a couple weeks ago. And we, we got a very favorable response. We had a ton of parents that came in to talk to us, even though they were talking, we're talking to eighth graders. We're trying to get them ready to make sure they know what they need to do ninth and 10th grade so they could come to us in, in their junior and senior year. And I mean, the biggest perk for parents is they can earn this credit free of charge, other than to the high school. So we're trying to get more awareness there.
And I know the paper stepped out for a moment, but I think we need to, you know, hit them up and get them to do a feature on it because I think this is a game changer, such a positive.
Gloria, I heard a rumor. That not this county, but other counties, they're calling their students, prepare the meal for the teacher of the year and the support staff of the year, just a thought. I'm just, that's all I'm going to say.
Well, I'll keep that in mind, thank you. I think our new chef would be up to the challenge. He's doing a great job.
So you heard us, I don't know if you were here at the start of the meeting, you talked a little about our meeting at the elected leader summit and there was some discussion there, the first part of the meeting was pretty much all about us, but I do a lot with vocational education. And Mr., Mr. Denard said that he's, he's working with you on, on the trades.
We're looking at doing continuing workforce education to try to help our businesses in the area train some skilled workers so they can hire some employees, because they're having a hard time finding skilled workers. So yes, we're meeting on February 3rd to do a roundtable discussion to see how we can help with that along the way.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thank you.
Just before we try to conclude, I want to mention that academy night, if you, I don't know if you heard much about it, but we basically advertised to all of our middle schools and gave them, gave all of our academies within the county an opportunity to present to parents on one night. And it's the first time we've done that as a county. We had at least 300 parents there that night that took advantage of hearing more about our high school academies. A very positive night. This concludes the recommendations from the high school directions committee. And you typically have a process where we'll determine if we need to have another directions meeting in the early spring. Maybe, maybe not. And then we will have, begin our student progression plan meetings. We'll typically have one meeting to, to sort of solidify any things that we want to look at changing with the progression plan. And then legislation is passed. And by late May, we have an idea of how legislation may impact the student progression plan. And then we have to write in anything that is impacted by legislation. So that's typically a process, we'll, we'll look at our changes, write those in and then wait for legislation. And once legislation comes, we will include that and then wait to be for approval. Any questions? I appreciate you taking time to listen to me, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Well, I've got adjournment on there, I was wondering if we needed anything else to go for the board. All right, so we're going to meet back here at 1:00, we're going to meet in the upstairs conference room at 1:00. Is that right? Is that it, everything I needed to say? Very adjourned.